City Council, please come to order. Clerk will call the roll. Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Rapozo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President LaLavi LaBeau. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. I will entertain a motion to open-
Motion to open.
Second. Motion made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Curb removals, number one.
Madam Vice President, could I, I'm sorry, the speaker's on? I think the mics sound like they were working over there, I just, I can't hear.
Any better now?
Better.
Yeah, perfect.
Is that better?
Stick to your toes.
That's right.
No, no, I think they just adjusted it.
Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Curve removals, number one. Daniel Quintel, 73 Columbia Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. Existing opening, oh, I'm sorry, at, yeah, 23 Church Street, existing opening 10 and a half feet, curbing to remove 10 plus feet. Combined openings, 20 and a half feet. The existing dwelling is serviced by a 10 and a half foot curb opening driveway on Church Street. The applicant is proposing to extend this opening slash driveway an additional 10 feet to provide improved access to the existing off-street parking spaces. If granted, the applicant shall install an entirely new concrete apron within the right of way. The existing area is comprised of broken concrete sidewalk and driveway. The applicant shall also be required to repair any and all sidewalk slash roadway or curbing affected by this construction activity. Is there, are there any proponents here for this curb cut? Seeing none, are there any opponents here for this curb cut?
Motion to close.
Motion to close was made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counsel Rapozo. Take a motion to open the public meeting for number two.
Motion to open.
Motion to open by Counsel Rapozo, seconded by Counsel Pelletier. Elizabeth L. Pereira Ryan, 229 Hawthorne Street, for the removal of curbing as follows. The existing dwelling is serviced by a 16-foot curb opening slash driveway on Hawthorne Street that accesses an existing garage. The applicant is proposing a new 13-foot curb opening slash driveway that will provide access to new off-street parking spaces. The existing 16-foot opening will be reduced by four feet. If granted, the applicant shall install an entirely new concrete or asphalt driveway apron within the right of way. The existing area is comprised of grass with no sidewalks. The applicant shall also be required to repair any and all shoulder area slash roadway or curbing affected by this construction activity. Are there any proponents for this? Yes, sir. You may step forward. Please give your name and address for the record, sir.
Daniel E. Ryan, Sr., 229 Hawthorne Street, Fall River, Mass.
I have a question.
Would you say you're in favor of-
Oh, I'm in favor of this, yes, please.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pal.
The only question that I have, Mr. Ryan, is, in doing this, it says that there isn't any concrete, it's grass, in front, that, and it says that you put concrete or asphalt. Which do you think you're gonna do?
Concrete.
Concrete looks good, but asphalt, concrete?
Mm-hmm.
I think that's wonderful.
Improves the property.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any opponents to this? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by-
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier, all in favor? Pole locations, motion to open.
Motion to open.
Motion to open, made by Counsel Rapozo.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Massachusetts Electric Company and Verizon, New England Incorporated, for one jointly-owned pole relocation and one jointly-owned pole location as follows. Pole number four on 14th Street is being relocated 25 feet north of its current location. This will create a long span, so a new pole will need to be installed approximately 50 feet south of the existing location of pole number four. Poles being relocated and installed in order to make room for a new entrance for trucks at loading dock for the new building located at 583 Bedford Street in accordance with Plan Number 30586621 dated June 28, 2022. Are there any opponents here for this pole location? Seeing none, are there any opponents? Proponents? Proponent, please come to the table, state your name and address for the record.
Al Galvin, design engineer, National Grid Electric. As the statement says, there's an addition going on this commercial property, and currently pole four is in the way of their driveway, their entranceway, so we're relocating that over to make room for the trucks to go through, and in doing that, it expanded the, it elongated the spans that are out there, so we had to add an intermediate pole to support the lines and the poles that are already out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All set, no questions?
No, no vote.
Thank you.
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close by Counsel Rapozo.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Kadeem, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to open pawnbroker and second-hand artist.
Motion to open.
Motion to open by Counsel Rapozo.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Fall River Financial Massachusetts LLC, doing business as Fall River Pawnbrokers, care of MGG Investment Group LP, One Penn Plaza, Suite 53, New York, New York, 10119, for permission to operate and maintain a pawnbroker and second-hand article store located at 364 South Main Street. Used jewelry and general merchandise to be sold. Are there any proponents for this? Any opponents? Can you please give your name and address for the record?
Paul Bryant, 780 Bullston Street, Boston, Mass. I'm the president of Fall River Financial, and the next three pawn shops we are in the process of acquiring. They've existed for 10 to 20 years or so in the community. The intent is to continue to operate them the same, keep the employees, same brand, and under my kind of larger entity.
Thank you.
Any questions? Counselor in seat five, Counsel Pelletier?
New York address?
That's where our fund is based, yes. But I'm based in Boston, I have a large store in Boston as well.
You're buying these three in Fall River?
Yes, sir, along with eight others-
Oh, okay.
-in the South Shore. Yes, sir.
That was the next question. So you're actually buying all of them?
Yes, sir, all 11.
Just about.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. All right, I have no problem. We have no problem with the pawnbrokers. I just hope that we have the same situation that we have with you, and I don't know how good your record is, I hope it's pretty good.
Be happy to talk to you about it, but yes, it is.
What's that?
I've been doing this for a long time, yes. Yes, sir.
All right, I have no problem, good luck.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Counselor in seat four, Counsel Kilby?
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There was a concern brought up a number of years ago with regarding having too many in the city. So, I mean, this is a public hearing, so I will see if there's any opponents to it, and if I have any questions, if you can leave your number with the clerk, I'll give you a call. But it was a concern at one time that we were getting oversaturated, I think it was Counsel Pelletier who was on top of that issue. So that's just a little concern of mine.
Sure, and, but again, I'm not opening or proposing to open any new ones, just to operate the ones that are existing currently, yes, sir.
All right, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. No more questions? Any opponents? Seeing none?
Motion to close.
Motion to close made by Counsel Rapozo.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five?
Motion to open.
Will we take items five and six together since it's the same individual?
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Counsel Pereira to take five and six together, seconded by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Number five, Fall River Financial, Mass. LLC, doing businesses for Fall River Pawnbrokers, care of MGG Investment Group LP, One Penn Plaza, Suite 53, New York, New York, 10119, for permission to operate and maintain a pawnbroker and second-hand article store located at 1475 South Main Street. Used jewelry and general merchandise to be sold. Number six, Fall River Financial, Mass. LLC, doing business as Fall River Pawnbrokers, care of MGG Investment Group LP, One Penn Plaza, Suite 53, New York, New York, 10119, for permission to operate and maintain a pawnbroker and second-hand article store located at 1435 Pleasant Street. Used jewelry and general merchandise to be sold. Do we want to hear from the proponent again?
Yep.
Sir? Any questions for the proponent?
Will we open the meeting? Yes, oh, we have a meeting.
Any opponents?
Motion to close.
Motion to close the meeting has been made by Counsel Rapozo.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn public hearing.
Motion to adjourn public hearings was made by Counsel Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Mo, uh, public hearing is closed. Counsel Committee on Finance will please come to order, and the clerk will call the roll. Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Rapozo?
Here.
Washington?
Here.
President LaLavi LaBeau. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. We have one person signed up for citizen's input, Nelson Vaz. Uh, Vasquez, I'm sorry. Just state your name and address, please, for the record.
Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill, Fall River. Counselors, I am here tonight as a concerned citizen of Fall River, because it seems no one in our local government is interested in researching the financial condition and future of the MBTA. As counselors, you should be concerned about the long-term financial impact of possibly becoming part of the MBTA authority. The citizens of Fall River are already facing a debt override for DURFI, a 30-year, $6 million debt for Diamond, and the cost of 68 positions currently funded with ARPA money, which will ultimately cost us millions in salary and benefits. With all these additional debts added to our already overtaxed city, how can, how can we not look at the future impact of the MBTA? Can you as, can you as the legislative body that oversees our finances ignore the catastrophic financial position of the MBTA? The following headlines from the Boston Herald are clear. What will it take to fix the MBTA? Decades and billions of dollars, says one expert. And for the record, that expert is David D. Alessandro, the lead author of the 2008, 2008 MBTA review under then-Governor Deval Patrick. And he said, and I quote, "We're in for a very long ride, maybe 20 years." Another headline, MBTA is in full-blown crisis that won't be resolved by federal tax over report, says. I could go on and on, but my question to you is this: Why don't the citizens of Fall River know this? Why haven't you demanded the MBTA come to Fall River and have a public forum to give us the projected increases that local communities in the authority will be facing from the looming catastrophic deficit they face? Are we to believe we will see no increases? If you believe that, I've got some prime swap real estate for sale as a joke. But the question facing our people is not a joke. The director of the MBTA said, quote, "We're going to fall off the financial cliff in year 2023." Why are these questions being ignored, or worse, being disregarded or covered up? I know State Representative Fiola has been asked for projected cost estimates by one of her constituents. You swore a note to be answerable to the people. These are valid questions that need answers from the MBTA, not platitudes like just check the box, it won't cost a penny. It will very surely be costing a lot of pennies, since the MBTA is billions in debt. The citizens of Fall River need full disclosure of how the MBTA's debt will impact local communities-
30 seconds, sir.
...and their assessments. That question must be asked and answered. And for full disclosure, here are the articles. Everyone in the north part of our state is talking about this, everyone.
15 seconds, sir.
Here it is. In the coming days, we will provide more information for the city, because they deserve to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, do we have any written citizen's input?
We have one that was presented at the, at our August meeting, but we had exceeded the 30-minute time limit. It was presented by Patrick Higgins, who had asked the council president for this to be heard at our next meeting, which is this evening. So that's what I have before me right now.
Do we need a motion to waive the rules?
Um, yes, he, yes, he no longer lives in Fall River, so we would need a motion to waive the rules.
Yeah, what's the current address, please?
Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
It's, he's listed in an old address on this email, but it's been brought to my attention that he no longer lives in Fall River.
Motion to waive the rules?
Motion to waive the rules made by Counsel Kadeem?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Washington, all in favor? Counselor in seat two?
Excuse me?
What address is the other?
The address that is listed on here is 1197 Robeson Street.
Did he live in that address when he wrote this letter?
Yes.
Do we have any indication where he lives? No. Just trying to follow the rules.
Georgia.
Which this gentleman is very rule-sensitive, so.
Georgia. Thought he lived in Alabama.
I'm sorry, Alabama, you're correct.
Yeah, I thought he lived in Alabama. But he lived here when he wrote the letter, is that what you're saying?
Supposedly he lived here when he wrote the letter, yes.
Okay, please read the citizen's input.
Yep. So here we are again. Once again, we learn the council president continues to deceive the residents and voters of where she really lives. Her campaign finance reports and voter registration reflects that she lives at 478 Osborne Street, yet a recent Fall River Herald News article reflects that Westport Police Department executed a search warrant at her new Boston Road apartment address. She's living a lie which has not changed since her reelection in November, with an address on the ballot that she has not lived at in many months. Council president must resign immediately and allow Ricky Tiff to become our next city counselor. Patrick Higgins, 1197 Robeson Street.
Madam Clerk, this point of information, has that address been updated?
Uh, council, council president's address?
Yes.
Yes, it has.
Do we have any other written citizen's input?
I do have one more. Honorable City Council, it has become common knowledge that two members of this council and one attorney who is conspiring to throw a coup d'etat to overthrow the leadership of the city council. While I understand that the council president is currently answering charges that have been levied against her, and she was arraigned today to answer to those charges, she is upholding her rights under the law, as this council should be sure to do. Everyone is presumed innocent until proven guilty. I want to remind several members of the council that they have some skeletons in their closets, from racist comments, to possession of police documents, to illegal gaming, and we even have a citizen that wants to create havoc that has a criminal charge against her, or one that has been adjudicated. We must be careful where we throw stone, the stones, a window will break. To attempt to force a member of this council to step down or resign is abhorrent. Anyone who wants to prejudge the case before it is heard, before a court and a jury, is placing themselves above the law. My reading of the report acknowledges that Pam admitted to placing the calls and that she has downloaded the app, but I do not see an admission of guilt. While some feel that the leadership of the council should place the appearance of the council before their personal beliefs, we see with an attempt at a coup d'etat by two city councilors and an attorney is rather presumptuous and self-imposing. While many may wish to see the leadership change at this point, it seems rather early, and after all, the council will vote on new leadership in January. I want to also bring to your attention that nowhere on today's agenda is there an item to discuss or change the leadership of the council as such. It cannot be brought up by the council, as this was an item that could reasonably be foreseen, and by discussing the issue, the council may be violating the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law. I know that corporate counsel only renders opinions that are beneficial for the administration, and has attempted to have a hands-off approach to the counsel on this issue, but slyly places the responsibility on the counsel and may even be supporting a conspiracy to throw a coup. The charter has a provision that requires that an elected official resign their elected office if convicted of a felony. To date, no one has been convicted of a felony or any other charge. Let the case follow its course, and once a decision is rendered, then may the faults fall where they may. Everyone is entitled to due process, and if this counsel attempts a coup d'etat, they are denying the leadership, their due process. We deserve better. Respectfully, C.J. Ferry. That's all we have.
Thank you. Number two, I'm Committee on Finance, mayor, and orders to accept and expend the following grants. A, $268,132, Mass DCR, to extend the Quikshane River Trail.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. B, $100,000, U.S. EPA Lead Pipe Inventory and Public Engagement Program. Um, let me see. This one here has no matching grant.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counsel Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Washington, all in favor?
I have a question. It doesn't say-
Counselor in seat, says Pereira.
It doesn't say what, where these lead pipes are gonna be done. Will we get that information after? You know, I'm just curious as to what pipes.
Mr. Ferland is here, if we'd like to bring him to the table?
Just, for my knowledge.
We want to waive the rules to bring him? Do we have a motion to waive the rules?
Motion. Second.
Motion made by Counsel Pelletier, seconded by Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Counselors. So this grant that's in front of you was provided to us by an application we submitted to EPA Region 1. This grant will allow us to take our lead service inventory that we have another grant for through the SRF program, develop the inventory. This will allow us to do an interactive map for residents to be able to view where lead services are located, whether it's at their property or not. This is a requirement of the revised lead and copper rule, needs to be done prior to January 2024.
To do the inspection and see where the lead-
Yep.
Okay, 'cause I've had people questioning lead, and I didn't know if you knew where some of these areas were, but if you end up doing that survey and finding it out, if you could share it with us, I'd, I'd have people call on that.
Yes, so this will be on, on the city website-
Right.
-a public-facing map that any resident would be able to view.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Ferland.
Do yield.
With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat five, Counsel Pelletier?
How many situations do we have with lead, lead pipes out in the city?
So as of right now, our records indicate that we have about 750 or so full-lead services, so that's from the water main all the way into the property. We have 109 partial-led services from the water main to the curb stop, and then we have about 2,830 or so partial-led services from the curb stop all the way into the house.
So our next question is, what do we do with $100,000? Can't do much with that?
Right, so this $100,000 isn't for actual removal of the lead service. This will help us, again, develop the interactive map that's required by the revised lead and copper rule. The other portion of this is also gonna help us do some public education about lead and how it could affect people. We do have multiple other grant applications in for lead service removal, one on the federal level into the EPA for $10 million. We have another application into the HUD program for assistance of low-income households.
What would be the basic cost of somebody switching over?
So right now, we estimate, and again, it all depends on contractors and what the market is, but we estimate, you know, and again, all dependent on the property, if there's a wall there, but a simple service of the full replacement, we're estimating at about $8,000. To do a partial-led service from the curb stop into the house could be $3,000 or $4,000.
$8,000? That's a lot of money. I don't know how many of these people, with everything that goes up in Florida, taxes, water and everything else, gonna throw another $8,000 to get the lead service out? Good luck, I don't know how you're gonna make out with that.
Yeah, again, we're looking at all grant options right now to be able to assist the residents and the ratepayers. Right now, we have it estimated at about $23 million to remove all the lead services within the city.
No, it's good that we get the information out and see what happens. I yield, thank you.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you, Mr. Ferland.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Yeah, it was a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt, made by Counsel Kilby, second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Pelletier, all in favor? 2C, $148,500, Mass EOEEA, final design and permits to repair Saudi Pond Dam. This particular project has a 25% match, which will come out of the Water Department, dam project authorization.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Pelletier, I mean Counsel Pereira, I'm sorry. Second was Counsel Pelletier, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Madam Vice President, just, do we have to refer this to full counsel, is that, or is it already there?
It does have to be referred.
Ultimately, everything will have to be referred to full counsel?
Okay.
So we don't have to do that.
So the motion to adopt is for referral, is that?
The recommendation would be to adopt.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
2D, $379,875, Mass EOEEA, mitigate effects of nutrient pollution in the South Whituppa Pond. This project has a 25% match, which, which is being suggested that it comes from the Bristol County ARPA funds. Point of information, the fact that it is, I guess, being requested that it comes from Bristol County ARPA funds, would we have to vote first or separately to approve the allocation for the 25% match? What order would this, or, or does that not matter?
It doesn't matter.
Yes.
I can answer the question.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So that's already been one of the projects that's been building up? It's the Blue Water Project, it's part of the, of the 560s.
Mr. Akins, could you come to the table so you can speak in the microphone, and the listeners at home can hear you? Thank you.
Thank you.
Attorney Hohm is also here.
Attorney Hom is also here, and she could correct me if I'm wrong. But I do believe that the match here is one of the projects that was already voted on by this council and approved, and is now going through the application process with Bristol County Treasury.
Now, I'm sorry. Is that one of the original seven or eight projects?
That's one of the original ones. I believe it was the Blue Water Project.
And have those been approved?
Yeah.
So they are in the process of being approved. It takes multiple weeks for the application process to go through. It's a two-step process. There's an auditing firm that does the initial step, and then a second auditing firm that does the second and final step, so it could be eight to 10 weeks.
So at this point, it's fair to say they're still under review?
I think now I'm in over my head. I'm confident enough to admit, and I'm going to defer to Attorney Hom.
Thank you.
Thank you. What I would just say is that it seems as though that project will likely be allowed by the Level One review, which is promising, and then we have Level Two, and then Third Review with the Bristol County Treasury. So it does, it seems as though it's moving in the right direction to be approved. There hasn't been any red flags, or they've sent it back and said, this doesn't look good or fit a category.
So essentially, it's still in the review process, and we haven't gotten the actual approval yet. It's just looks promising.
I mean, it's, the Level One is very, has been extremely scrutinized, and so in my conversations with CLA and their representative, the auditor working on it, I mean, he has, he, they, he's said that this is approvable, and then we're just going to move it on to the next step. We're just giving some extra addendums attached to it.
So should this grant be, take action contingent upon that approval, or how do we proceed?
Just approve it.
So I think it has to. So at this point, because I think it clearly fits into a category, there's very little chance that there's, there's going to be any issues with Bristol County Treasury administering the grant through ARPA, through the Bristol County ARPA money. I think it would just, it would have to be, if the council is inclined to accept the grant, they could do it contingent upon the ARPA match, which I think is almost assuredly going to happen.
Thank you. Counselor in seat six, Council Pereira.
I, I think this is a worthwhile project to do, because when they have the bloom, the algae bloom in July and August, people can't use the South Watupa, but we're cleaning this. This is a concern that I'm going to share with you, and I've shared it with Mr. Ferland as well. You also have people in Westport, Tivitan, and the nutrients, and the reason we have those algae blooms is because of the chemicals that they're using on their lawns to fertilize their lawns. So again, I mean, it's almost like the CSO. We're paying to clean the Totten River, but anybody else didn't have to pay. What is being done? I'm all for supporting this, but I think that there has to be an effort made to contact the selectmen in those communities, or figure out something with EPA, or whoever you have to figure it out with, that those people be educated on what type of fertilizers they can use, what can they do, so that it's not creating the algae bloom for all of us. This city is surrounded by water, but our residents can't get a foot in it. That is ridiculous. And you know I've been working on Davis Beach since 1992. I think I'm going to die before that comes to fruition, but people have a right to be able to go into the, into the pond, or into the water. We can do it. Somerset has a beach, and they go into the water. What the heck? We can't do it. I mean, I know our motto is, we'll try, but gee, how long are we going to try? Let's move and do something. It drives me absolutely crazy. But I think that, you know, this is worthwhile, because we need to clean it up, but I also think that other communities have to share some of the responsibility, at least in educating them so that they stop using things that are going to damage the environment. With that, I feel better, and I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt contingent upon the, the final approval from the agency. I'm not sure.
Bristol County Treasury.
Yes.
Motion made by Council Kilby.
Second.
Second by Council Kadim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Two E, $1,163,000, Mass EOEEA, Improve CSO Infrastructure to Mitigate Effects From Climate-Driven Flooding, Referred August 16, 2022. This project also has a 25% match, which will come out of the $123 million CSO authorization. Do we have any motion?
Motion to refer to full counsel.
Motion to refer to full counsel made by Council, seat one, Council Kadim, seconded by Council Pereira, seat six. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number three, Mayor, and memorandum of agreement between the City of Fall River and the Fall River Environmental Police, MCOP Local 491, referred on August 16, 2022.
Motion to refer to full counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to full counsel made by Counselor in seat six, Pereira, seconded by Council Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me, no, excuse me. Counselor in seat one.
Just a quick question for the administration. So, one, thank you again for the, for the breakout, but it just seems like this is covering the last fiscal year, so you're currently going through negotiations for a successor agreement?
Thank you. Thank you for raising that. It's a little unusual. It's a one-year agreement, and we're actually already out of agreement. I'm going to defer to HR Director Macalini to talk a little bit about the unique circumstances around this particular bargaining unit.
So, short answer to your question, yes, the contract expires already, June 30, '22, and then we will restart negotiations with them again. Their union is down to two members right now, possibly will drop down to an additional one, so we have a larger conversation to have with that group going forward.
Okay. I guess, so a general question, and because this one might be a little bit different, but moving forward, we're still continuing with three-year contracts as the duration of most of the contracts we're looking for?
We are. The additional aspect to this particular, particular contract is that whether or not there are additional positions within this bargaining unit that could fill is really contingent upon what happens with the patrol positions that are open, because right now...
There's 19 openings?
There's 19 openings. And so those will get filled just by necessity before this bargaining unit would, would have additional members. So to some extent, it's a little bit of a, we want to settle that agreement, which is close.
Right.
And then we also want to sort of, I don't want to say wait and see, but it makes sense to at least get a sense of where the hiring is going to be going in the next several months. But the policy is a three-year contract.
Perfect. How many members in this unit? Oh, I guess positions that are open that we're anticipating filling, whether we get them filled this fiscal year or...
I believe it's five total.
Five.
But there's two members now, and I think one is in the process of possibly going to patrol.
Okay. Thank you. I yield.
Thank you.
So there's a motion to refer.
Excuse me?
I yield.
Thank you.
There was a motion to refer?
Motion to refer, yes. Was made by Council Kilby and seconded by Council Pereira.
Sure.
Sure. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I can talk to them about that.
Item number four, Discussion of Fiscal Year 2022, Quarter Four Budget Report.
So again, this, this book is quarter four. It's still very premature. It's not final. We're still doing accruals. Most, I would say we're very comfortable that the majority of them have been entered, but again, you have up to 60 days, which just ended on August 31, to make all of your adjustments, and we still need to go through all of the side funds. But again, this is an unaudited snapshot in time where we stand, and right now, I don't project any deficits happening.
Need a motion or...
Are there any questions? Motion? Any discussion?
No.
Motion to...
Motion to refer to full counsel.
Second.
Motion to refer to full counsel by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn Finance.
Motion to adjourn Finance was made by Council Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Finance is adjourned. One minute. City Council, please come to order.
It's okay. Wait a minute, Danny. Don't move. Hey, go. Thank you.
It is now. Amish. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? Counselors Kadim?
Here.
Kamara?
Here.
Deon?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Pereira?
Here.
Repouzo?
Yep.
Washington?
Here.
President La Liberty LeBeau. Will everyone in the council chamber please rise for a moment of silent prayer? Please remain standing for a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Madam Clerk, the first item before you is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the appointment of Tyler Antea as the Director of Management Information Services.
Motion to approve.
Motion, second.
Motion to approve made by Council Pereira, seconded by Council Repouzo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is Tyler here this evening?
He is.
I'd like to meet Tyler.
Hi.
Pleasure to meet you.
Congratulations. I've heard wonderful things about you in that office.
Good luck, buddy. Good luck. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
The next is the mayor's request for the confirmation of the reappointments to the cultural council. We have Susan C. Cody, Dr. Donald Corvoo, and Richard R. Pelletier.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion to approve by Council Repouzo, seconded by Council Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item three is the mayor's request for the approval of the proposal for the Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $164,350 for Fitness Court Initiative, proposed by Council Linda Pereira.
Motion to approve.
Can I make an, I need to make an amendment to that. The figure is wrong. It shouldn't be 164,350. It should be 114,350, because it's a $50,000 grant attached to it.
Motion to adopt is amended.
Second. Motion to adopt is amended by Council Kilby, seconded by Council Pelletier. All in favor of the amendment? Anybody opposed? Point of information, so, do we know when, well, can I ask the ARPA director to the table?
Sure. I can answer your questions, but if you feel more comfortable having her, that's fine. Kara has been working.
No, it is, has nothing to, no, this is, I'm going to, I'm going to let you speak. It is, it is your, it is your...
You need a motion to waive the rules?
Please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
My point of information is just, when might, if this application be submitted? It's my understanding that Counselor in seat eight's proposal has not been submitted yet, because BC Treasury is taking longer than people anticipated. Do you know when these applications might start being submitted?
Yep, so all seven of the previous ones that had been voted upon were submitted. The For Youth Initiative, I've already started it, I just haven't certified it to send, because we're just creating some documents that we want to attach to it. And then the fitness one is less cumbersome, so I think that that could probably be submitted by the end of the week.
Okay, thank you. Council Pereira?
I, I think that part of the issue is Jane Gonzalez, who used to be a city council of New Bedford, I know Jane well. Jane is running the Bristol County ARPA monies, and just like we in Fall River are submitting, so is New Bedford, so is Totten, so is Norton, I mean, all of the Bristol, so there's a stack of them there that she just has to go through with everyone, so.
I can add that when I submitted our first initial seven, I was told by Jane that 16 other, like, total of 16 had gone in, which was pretty cumbersome for the Bristol County Treasury.
Right.
So this is going to take a, this grouping is going to take a little bit longer, I was told.
Yeah, but, but it is approvable with their criteria.
Yeah, so, and I, I should have...
And...
Sorry, and I should have sort of said this, reworded it earlier when I spoke. If there was an issue with the, sort of, it not qualifying, and there was like a red flag to say, we have concerns, I would know that already on the seven projects. I also can say that I had, did speak with Bristol County Treasury about the For Youth Initiative and what addendums and documents I should attach with that, and was told that this was exactly what they were hoping for.
Thank you, Attorney.
Do you yield?
I yield.
Counselor in seat eight, is it Council Washington?
You stated, just to elaborate on that, I don't, people that, we're familiar with the proposals that we put in, but I think people at home are hearing some of this and maybe getting worried, like, is it not going through? Is it not? I don't want that fear to set into the community, so you just kind of said it. Can you elaborate on it for people? Because, I mean, I, I've gotten calls. People are excited for a lot of these proposals to go through, so it's just the process, not to worry. Can you just kind of go through that a little bit more? Yes, and I, I think one thing we all have to worry, that we don't have to worry about, we all have to understand, is that this is new to everyone. So when I have a question about it, I mean, I, I have to really seek somebody that also really might also have a question about this. You know, it's, it's new to everyone, and we're all, Bristol County too. I mean, we did meet with John Mitchell this week, and it's new to them, and so they're also sort of learning, as applications come in, what the process should be and what it is, and so right now, and there hasn't been many applications, this was, this big, this was a big one. They've only approved, there hasn't been, you can go on their website and you can see what's been approved, but, you know, there's a ton of money still left with Bristol County Treasury to tap into. The process is just that everyone wants to do this right. They are going to be audited, just like we are going to be audited in this city with our own ARPA money that we have control of. And so they have put in place a three-level review. The first is the CLA, which is their auditors. The second is, review is their attorneys, and then the last is Jane Gonzalez with the Bristol County Treasury. And so I think what has happened is that a lot of them have sort of got stuck in Level Two, and there's been a lot of back and forth, and so now Level One, I think, is really trying to work with the municipalities and the communities to make sure that, like, all of our i's are dotted and our t's are crossed, and that by the time it gets to Level Two, they can assure that it will go through. And so I think they're just being very overcautious in the process, and they're just asking for a lot of stuff. But I think that I'm certainly getting better at understanding what they need now, and so I'll make sure that in these ones that are going to be coming through, and I'll be starting the applications for anything that is passed tonight, that I'll be, I'll, I know now what we need to really make sure we include. So I just bear with us. I mean, it is, I haven't had any... But I think that I'm certainly getting better at understanding what they need now, and so I'll make sure that in these ones that are gonna be coming through, and I'll be starting the applications for anything that is passed tonight, that I'll be, I'll, I know now what we need to really make sure we include. So I, just bear with us, I mean, it is, I haven't had any, I haven't had any of them say, "This is not good, this is not gonna go through", so.
So, yeah.
Is that helpful?
No, it's very helpful, and I, I understand the process, I want people listening to, it's okay, it's, you kind of gotta go slow to go fast, and so it's, where we're at, it's just part of the process, people can not be too worried.
Yeah, and I think it's a good point that you're making, like, I think we deal with it and live and breathe it every day, the administration, and so, we understand it, and when we talk about it, we kind of go quickly and use words that are probably pretty confusing, and just, we, we don't slow down and take it step by step, so.
Yeah, so I, I just wanted to clarify for people not to worry, these projects are moving forward, it's, it's a new process we're going through, and before you know it, before the new year, we'll be up and running, so.
Yes.
Okay, I yield, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Council Kamara?
Yeah, great explanation, but the easiest way to let people know what's going on is just let them know, the government moves slowly. Plain and simple, that's how it is. That I yield?
Thank you. Yes, thank you for the clarification. I think very often, we forget that the people looking in and on the outside don't hear the conversations, and so the clarification and the explanations, I think, are very helpful for everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Do I leave for-
Thank you.
Yes, you're excused.
Is there a motion on number three?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Council Pereira, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Council Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number four is the mayor's request for the approval of a proposal for Bristol County ARPA funding in the amount of $145,000 for solar flashing stop and pedestrian signs initiative, proposed by Council Linda Pereira.
I'll speak on it.
Counselor in seat six, Council Pereira.
The LED lights that we have for stop signs and yield signs, et cetera, seem to be working well throughout the city, and in last year's budget, some money was taken away from the traffic department to be able to get some more of these signs. In working with Laura Ferreira from traffic, the priority would be to place these flashing pedestrian crosslights, crossing signs, near elderly housing like Hood Street and Cardinal Madeira's Tower, Bates Street, Bates Apartment, Pleasant Street, Baresi Heights and Cartel, and there's high-traffic areas around the schools, so we're looking at the Laterno School, the Fonseca School on Quarry Street and, and on Small Way, which is around there, and it's, we just want to make it safe. Robeson Street to Pine Street, Green School, Henry Lloyd on Amity Street, and to look at some of the playgrounds, Morgan Street and Second Street, Globe Street and Stafford Road, Wade Street and John Street, and Fifth Street locations, and then, some of the other highly-trafficked roads is Lyons and Middle, Airport Road and Northbound Drivers, Bay and Middle, Bradford Avenue, Division and William, all at Broadway, because we don't, I mean, they put one in front of St. Anthony the Paterwa Church on Bedford Street, and that light, that yield sign, really makes a difference at that crosswalk, because we've had more than one accident there, where people have been severely injured. So if we could use ARPA money to do that, they're solar-powered, so I just think it's a, a good idea. The safer, the better. And some of these drivers today, boy, I don't know, some of these people got their licenses, but those flashing tend to really hone in on people. With that I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat two, Council Kamara?
Yeah, no, I'm also, I was just curious as to how many lights we're getting, but I think the amount is 50?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Do we know the cost of each one?
It's 50 of the crossing and 50 of the flashing stop signs, so all total, it's 100 signs total.
Thank you, with that I yield.
Thank you. Counselor in seat one, Counsel Kadim?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask through you, Madam Vice President, to my colleague in seat six, six, are we committing to, I guess, by putting the amount, you know, 50 stop signs versus 50 pedestrian, if the, I guess, if traffic feels like there's more solar stop signs that are needed than the crosswalks, that we prohibit that?
I think they think that we could use more of them everywhere, but I think for now, if we can at least get 50 of each and put them in high-traffic areas or where there's young children or seniors, I, that's kind of the goal. I, I don't like saying seniors anymore, can we say seasoned citizens? Just has a better feeling, being seasoned rather than senior.
I just didn't want to handcuff the department in terms of, by saying, "We're gonna do 50 crosswalk, 50 stop signs", so if we just said 100, you know, stop signs in, right, at the discretion of the department, then there's flexibility if they feel there's need for more stop signs versus, you know, crosswalks.
If you'd like to do that, I have no problem with that, you can amend it to 100 signs of yield and stop.
So I'd, I'd make that amendment, that the, at the discretion of the traffic department, to identify out of the 100, what the allocation would be between stop signs and cross-
Motion by Counselor in seat one to amend, do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Council Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to adopt, I mean, approve, I'm sorry?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Excuse me, Counselor in seat seven, I'm sorry, Counsel Raposo.
Yeah, I, I guess my only concern here is, it's, it's a good start, I just, I'm concerned of few things. First, how these, for example, the streets at the bottom, how were they determined to be the ones we were gonna pick to do this? That's question one, and I'll, I'll yield to Counsel Kamara in a minute, Pereira for that matter. The second question is regarding the schools, I know we picked a few, but I'm concerned that we should, if we're gonna pick certain schools, maybe we should just pick all the ones that really could benefit from this. I, I, like I said, it's a good idea, but I don't think it goes far enough to what we're probably gonna want to do, so I'd like to get some more information from my colleague in seat six, and I'll yield.
Basically, some of the locations that were selected, were selected with Mrs. Ferreira in the traffic department, saying these were key spots, these were spots that were high-traffic areas, and these are some of the schools that were listed, were schools with younger children. The Fonseca School, you know, the Laterno School, younger kids, or in schools where there's a lot of traffic, a lot of traffic around dismissal time, and, and, you know, when they enter school, that there's a big congregation. Sure, we can do more, but last year's budget, we didn't even give her the money to do these. That was taken out of the budget, so this is a start, and then if somebody wants to put in for additional money, that would be great. With that I yield.
Counselor in seat two, Counsel Kamara?
I think the ARPA director wants to comment, I'll make a motion to waive the rules if you do want to comment.
Second.
Just to give you a little bit of background, I had met with Laura Ferreira in traffic, and she has, these are the, just highlighting her priority spots, but she has already gotten quotes for 50 of the solar stop signs and 50 of the flashing LED pedestrian signs, and these are just like the top priority, but she has, and she's providing, assuming that this passes, she's been working on identifying, has identified, but putting a document together of all of the locations that would be the, the 50 signages for each would be used. But these are just identifying her top priorities based on the most foot traffic, and also, in consideration of getting this to fit into a category, it needs to be areas, certain types of areas as well, in order to fit into the ARPA category that it does.
Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Raposo?
So define what those areas mean.
So, the ones that are identified in the proposal, so, for instance-
High-traffic areas.
High tra, but, but high-traffic areas also that are in, near parks, near schools, as well, I think, and as well as elderly housing communities, where there's a heavy increase in foot traffic.
So, Madam Vice President through you, I'm wondering, how long will it be until we get that list of the other ones that could be, because I, I think my, my prerogative here is, if we're gonna do, we're gonna do it, and if Mrs. Ferreira knows what those other areas are, why don't we get that list and get it in here, so we can get it all one bank?
If I may, so I actually just asked her to, she, to prepare that for, that would be one of those addendums that Bristol County Treasury would like to see, I'm sure, to show where, you know, our money is being spent, and for specifically where those locations are, so she, as of last week, was already working on those, but I, my concern, I guess, would be that if we, she's already doing it, and if you guys think this is a good idea to vote on it tonight, so that we can just get this application process moving, so I mean, I guess I would wonder if, does it, I mean, does it change your opinion to have the full list versus knowing that these are gonna be put in, first, these top priority locations, and then other locations to follow?
We'd have to put a new application in.
No, 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 this is the, so this, the 50 and 50 that we would be seeking, the funding that's in the proposal, would be one application for Bristol County Treasury, and so, the, we wouldn't be seeking more money, this is, this would cover it. I guess I'm just saying that the document that I asked her to put together, because she has it all listed out, they've gone around and identified these areas, I've just asked her to create this list so that I can attach it to my application, assuming you guys approve this tonight.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have any answer.
Yeah, that's my question, yield, thank you.
Counselor in seat eight, Counsel Washington?
So I just want to make this clear, so if Counselor in seat seven is happy with Counselor in seat six's proposal, but has concerns now that he's seeing it, he could then, we could ultimately pass this, and then he could actually do some research and work with Laura and get more money for more signs, if that's what's needed. So we can, it's just, this can be approved, and he could go back and, and ask for more money, if that's what he wanted.
Yes, and I have a caveat to that. I would also say, he could also see the list once it's created, and he could say, "I actually think this is a better location", and have a conversation, and we could do that, too.
Fantastic.
Do you?
Thank you for the con-
I yield, thank you for the application. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
Do we have a motion on the amended proposal?
Second.
So moved.
A motion to approve by seat one, Counsel Kadim, second, Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number five is the mayor's communication and a resolution citing the Outdoor Fitness Court as part of the 2022 Blue Cross Blue Shield National Fitness Campaign.
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Motion to adopt is made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Washington, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item six is the mayor's communication and a TIF agreement amendment for Blount Fine Foods Corporation and Blount Realty Incorporated, located at 630 Current Road.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Kadim, seat one, Counselor, seat six, Pereira, second, any discussion? Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Raposo?
I'd like to ask the city administrator a question regarding this. Motion to waive the rules, second.
Motion to waive the rules is what was made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Raposo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome.
So I just wanted some clarity, was this the, was this the TIF agreement that was withdrawn at the last meeting?
It is.
Okay.
However, it's a little bit different now, so this TIF agreement, so there was an existing TIF agreement that was put in place in 2015. During the 2015 TIF agreement, there was a 50,000-square-foot expansion to Blount. It resulted, it was about a $10 million project, resulted in 300 or so new jobs created, and that agreement was set to expire in 2028. So they are proposing essentially a second expansion. Currently, they have about 1,000 employees, 250,000 square feet, they're looking to add another 39,000 square feet and additional 70 employees while retaining the existing employees. The state was concerned about two parallel simultaneous TIF agreements, so the, the percentage exemption beginning in 2023 through 2028 essentially combines the two agreements, so that's why for 2023 and '24, it's 80%, it goes down to 75% until '28, and that's when the 2015 agreement expires. The 2022 agreement continues on and goes to the normal 60%, which is what the original 2015 agreement was. So it's an amendment that really doesn't change the net effect of the agreement, it just combines two TIF agreements into one, so that there's not two separate ones, and it doesn't raise just questions about, you know, whether or not that should happen.
So that was mainly the reason for the withdrawal at the last meeting?
It was the only reason for the withdrawal.
Okay, and then as far as, at the end of FY 2035, that goes to zero? Is that what ends up happening?
Yes.
Okay, awesome, that's what I needed to know. I yield, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Do we have a motion?
There was a motion, we have a second.
Sorry, I'm sorry. To approve?
Thank you.
Sean made a motion, I gave it a second.
You gave it a second to adopt, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item number seven, we have a communication from the mayor, a planning board recommendation for approval and a resolution, this all relates to the waterfront downtown HD Zone, which will include Globe Mills Avenue and surrounding areas.
Motion to accept the mayor's communication, accept the planning board's recommendation and adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion to, to accept was made by Counselor in seat one, second, Counselor in seat four, Counselor Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, I'm gonna be opposed. Motion passes.
Item eight, we have the mayor's communication and orders to accept and expend grants. We have a grant for the Mass EOEEA, greening the Gateway Cities Implementation, in the amount of $99,125. Do you want to take them together or separately?
Motion to take them together?
Motion to take A, B, and C together by Counsel Kilby, is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, Counsel Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to take A, B, and C together, passes.
That was A that I read, B would be the grant for the US DHS FEMA Assistance to Firefighters in the amount of $41,905. C would be the Last Call Foundation, Health, Safety, and Welfare Firefighters, in the amount of $12,000.
Motion to adopt would be appropriate?
So moved, second.
Counselor in seat one, motion to adopt, second by Counsel Raposo, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item nine is the Traffic Commission making recommendations to the traffic ordinances?
Refer to ordinance, second.
Motion for to ordinance, Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Raposo, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on August 16th, voted unanimously to recommend the accompanying orders be referred to the full council for action. These were the, that this, excuse me, a resolution that the city council obligate $11 million of Bristol County ARPA funding for water and sewer infrastructure mandates.
Second.
Motion to adopt by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
Discussion, Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira?
I have a question. I thought we had dropped this down from 11 to six, but I'm wondering how much money is left in Bristol County ARPA, and I'd also like to know the water and sewer infrastructure mandates, and Bridget is no longer here, but I called to see what is the savings gonna be to the individual, and I was told a certain amount a year over how many years, and it ended up to be changed, like, what are they gonna fix with this? And how much money is there? I have questions, and maybe, I know Kara's standing there, if I could waive the rules, maybe she could give us some insight on what you can do there. If I could waive the rules, maybe she could give us some insight on what you can do there.
Motion to waive the rules was made by counsel Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by counsel Washington, all in favor?
Aye.
Do we also want to waive rules to have Mr. Ferland come down?
Motion.
Motion.
Second.
And second.
Point of clarification.
Yes.
We did change the amount at the last meeting.
Yeah, from 13 to 11, right?
No.
No.
It was till six.
I don't, point of information, I don't believe, I believe there was a discussion on changing the dollar amount. I don't believe a vote was taken on that. I believe, I believe you actually stated at that meeting that we would compromise, not compromise with the administration.
Correct, because we, yes.
And I, so I don't know that we actually took that final vote, but you are correct, counsel Pereira. There's not, there's no longer $11 million in Bristol County ARPA funding available. So that, that, so I guess we'll hear from these two individuals and then...
So I just want to clarify. So I guess we never came up with a certain amount that was voted on to reduce it to?
No, we never voted on it.
We just stated our intentions?
We discussed it. It was intention, intended, but we never took a vote on the dollar amount, I don't believe.
So that's what we'll do today when we approve it?
Yes, sir.
Put that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you.
If I may, I can give you the breakdown of where we are. So with the approvals tonight for the fitness and the signage, your balance is $9,194,374. And I just do want to say that I was thinking about it this week and again, after having gone through the Bristol County Treasury application process. And I think I had mentioned at the last council meeting, it is definitely not the path of least resistance, which is becoming more and more true every day. But I think that if we, if you approve the water and main projects or the money to be used for that, I really do urge you to be very specific and perhaps ask Mr. Ferland for a specific project because they're going to want, they're not going to give us money for just water and sewer. It certainly has to be something, a project that we can, you know, supplement documentation and explanation and be very specific about it. So I would urge you to, that would be my suggestion, would be to approve a specific project for whatever amount it is you decide.
Point, I, I believe that was the intention, that Mr. Ferland has multiple projects that are mandated. And so he was asked if 6 million were, was enough to cover a specific project. So I believe that that can be accomplished. Mr. Ferland?
Thank you very much. Yeah, again, as we spoke last time I was here, it's a number of projects that are upcoming either required by a federal court order or by pending DEP or EPA mandates or orders that may be coming down the line. The overall amount, so savings, so I just did the math quickly with the $6 million. It'd be saving roughly about $1.7 million in interest that would have to be paid back if we were to have to loan that amount out. That would be over a 20-year period typically that would take that loan out. Interest and debt payments in relation to that $6 million per year would be $369,000 roughly of debt and interest that would need to be paid back from either the water rates or the sewer rates. What that equivalates to on the, on the water or sewer rates is roughly about 13 cents on the rate.
That would be per CCF?
That is per CCF, yes. So if you take basic, so it was 13.6 cents per CCF, 13.6 cents times the 56 CCF per year that we use for the average household. It's about $8 per year for the average household. Again, you have to understand that's for the average household. Many of you counselors have been here for a while and 13 cents, me coming down here for a 13-cent rate increase, you know what that, that means. You know what myself and predecessors go through trying to get a rate increase like that approved on either water and the sewer. Again, it may sound like a, you know, a miniscule amount, but adding the 13-cent rate increase for the projects that this, that this would do on top of other operational increases just compounds it. Again, any type of grant funding or funding that doesn't cost our ratepayers, that's something that I'm, that I'm always after that can save our ratepayers. So within the, within the federal court order, there are a number of projects that need to be completed prior to 2024. There's Birch Street Sewer Separation, which is a large project, roughly about $18 million. There's some minor CSO improvements on Riponview and Charles in the $1 million range. The Ferry Street Pump Station is roughly about a $3 million project that needs to be completed. So, you know, we could either take a total of one project and if we wanted to do, you know, the other projects that are eligible, that are currently out there, we do have the wastewater treatment plant contract number two that is currently under construction down at the wastewater treatment plant as the SRF funding for that loan hasn't been fully expended, that would be eligible to be able to use ARPA funding for it as well, as well as water maintenance building. The other thing that this could be used for is lead service removal within the city of Fall River. That's something that, again, we spoke about earlier, that will impact a number of residents across the city. So that is another project that this, this funding specifically could be used for.
Cut. I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, my recommendation, if the council did want to approve a $6 million authorization tonight, I could come back with a, with a breakdown of the projects and, you know, again, this is Bristol County money that the council is authorized to spend. And I would like to, you know, work with the council to be able to put it towards the projects you felt it should go to.
Counselor in seat six, counsel Pereira?
When you say, Mr. Ferland, that it's, on the average home, it'll be an $8 savings per year, that's like $2 a quarter when we get our water bills. And that's the average. So I think that it would probably be more than that. And this is going to be over how many years?
Over a 20-year period.
Over 20 years. So from now, over the next 20 years, this 13-cent savings that we're going to get, you know you're going to come down and want an increase in water and sewer because you have all these projects to do.
Correct.
So this, if you take the $8 and put it over 20 years, what is the savings really going to be to people? I would rather have you say, look, there's one project I can do for a million dollars, another project I can do for $3 million. Take that $4 million and do those both projects and not mess around with, oh, this is going to be a savings. Because the last time we had a meeting here, back in August, the next day you were on the radio and I heard you talk about how you need to raise rates because we need to keep people at the water filtration plant employed. Those people have licenses and, you know, they need to make sure that our water is safe.
Yep.
And I feel badly because I think some of the unions are all together and what a dispatcher does, what a clerk does in City Hall, what they do with the treatment plant, what they do with the water filtration plant, those are all different jobs with different categories and they should be all divided and negotiated separately. You have, even at the water department, you had a CDL individual that transferred over to DCM because he's going to get paid more at DCM than he pays at Water. So then you got to have the foreman who has a CDL license driving a truck because we need a truck driver. I mean, to me, that's the craziest thing. Honestly, I understand what counsel Dion, Vice President Dion was trying to say before, if we put $11, it's going to save on CSO. It's really not. It's really not. Because you know you're going to go up in 20 years. So it's kind of going to be a wash. But if you say, these are specific projects that we will do with this money, fine. Then do those projects and take the money to do those projects. Never mind, we're borrowing and then we're going to pay on the loan and this and that. Because I, I feel so badly that Bridget Almond is gone. Because I had a conversation with her about, you know, financially what this would be. And if you can come back with something that says, these are the two projects I'm going to do, this is what the money it's going to cost us, then fine, vote on it. 18 million, obviously, we don't have. Or if you say, I'm going to do this project for a million, this project for 3 million, and I'm going to be able to do X amount of lead services and that's going to cost me 2 million. So there's your 6 million or 5 million.
Yeah, no.
To get it done. I want to see you get things done, but...
Yeah, no, definitely. And I wasn't on the radio saying that, that was a sound bit from, from my president.
Before?
Yeah, the presentation at the council meeting. I don't disagree with your statement that rates are going to go up.
Yeah.
This year, chemicals, operational, already, and I said it at the last meeting, you know, the, we're looking at a significant rate increase coming this, down the pipe this year. You know, again, any funding that comes in that are, that, to do projects that our ratepayers would have to pay for would minimize any of that rate increase. It would reduce it. Again, you're not going to, you're not going to hear from me this year that...
But it's not going to keep it reduced over, it's not going to keep it reduced over 20 years. It'll balance out and we're going to end up paying more. And that's something we have to realize. People don't like to hear that we have to pay more, but we have to. Because that's the only way we can keep competent staff and water is key. Water is key. I agreed when counsel Kamara mentioned getting ahold of Congressman Archunglaas to see what they can do. We've tried that route. I know counsel Kadim has been to Washington. Gee, I think when Flanagan was here with Lisa Souza, they all went to Washington to try to fight. We can yell as much as we want and they don't seem to be giving us the money. We'll try again.
Yeah.
But, I mean, I, you know, $8 now per year, you know it's not going to be $8 over 20 years. You're not going to have that savings. You're not. You may have it for a little while, but then you're going to go up. So why fool people? That's how I feel. I feel like we're fooling people. So I'd rather see you say, I can do this project for a million, this project for 3 million, and this many lead pipe services for this amount. And then counsel Dion can put in, that's the amount. There's 5 million or 6 million, but you can do something with it and it can make a change. That's my feeling.
Yep.
With that, I yield.
Counselor in seat eight, counsel Washington?
I'm conflicted here. And so, because I, I kind of feel like the last meeting that we had on this, it was, there was like a, there would be like a bigger savings than $8 a year. That's, I feel like you brought in your bill. I don't know if you were misled, like your bill went up. So this would like really help, but $2 a quarter for the regular household, like, so I'm in the business of saving lives. So this $6 million is a lot of money. Ms. Humm, attorney Humm, if I'm correct, we have till 2026 to spend this money.
I think it has to be, it has to be committed.
Committed.
By 2024.
By 2024.
And extended by 2026.
I just... We're going to rush to spend $6 million to save $2 a quarter. I respect, Vice President, what you're doing here. And I committed. First of all, I'm a person of my word. I'm committed. I said I was going to vote for the 6 million. I want you to know that. But I'm conflicted here within myself because that's a lot of money that we could look at. How can we save lives? How can we better the community with that money? But we're going to save $2 a quarter. So I, I would feel better personally if we could do what counselor Pereira is saying, like per project. I think people in the community would feel better. I want you to know, I committed to this. You, you bended for that project for the youth, to save youth. So, and I am a person of my word, but I am conflicted here because I really thought there was going to be a bigger savings than $2 a quarter. I mean, you brought your bill, you can't lie with your bill, but when you break down the numbers, $2 a quarter for $6 million when we could really look at saving lives. But, so I, I have to put that on record. I'm conflicted here. I, I, I'm a person of my word. I would feel better, and I think the residents would feel better, if we could scratch off projects, like here's a project, done, paid for, you know? Like, so that's, I yield, I, I yield.
Yeah, you do have to remember just that that's over a 20-year period. So that's 80 quarters that people are saving therefore. And I, I under, I understand.
But with inflation, like $2 today and $2 in 10 years is like, what does that even look like?
Yeah. And again, you know, 13 cents on the rate, coming down for 13 cents on the rate increase
I'm just taking, Mr. Ferland, you know how I feel about you.
Yep.
I, I have so much respect for you. I just was under the assumption at that last meeting that there would be like a couple $100 a year savings and we're looking at $8 a year and we committed to $6 million for an $8 a year savings when we have time to look at how can we make the most impactful meeting on our citizens of Fall River? And so I think that just maybe scratching off some projects, okay? The lead, can we do like 10 lead streets of piping into a house? I don't know. But let's scratch off some, some projects here. I, I just kind of feel...
I think counsel Dion would like to say something and she's at the podium. So she has to relinquish, there's nobody to relinquish to. I would waive the rules and allow her to express herself. She came up with this and I think it's not more than fair to allow her to speak from the podium.
I second that.
And waive the rules because I think this was something she brought forward and I don't know who would step up to stand there while you spoke, so.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
Second.
No, she was going to waive the rules by counsel Pereira, seconded by the counsel Washington. I'm going to recognize the counsel in seat one first, if you don't mind.
No.
He's been waiting.
Thank you, Vice President. So I guess if we want to debate whether or not something has been impactful, I would agree with that. You know, because I, I think that's a legitimate debate and argument. To say that it's not saving taxpayer money is just not being dishonest because it, it is saving taxpayer money. I mean, you got, you got over half a billion dollars worth of projects that are on the, on the table right now, right? That you don't know where the money's going to come from that's being mandated by the federal government? Is that not an accurate statement?
Oh, no, that is definitely an accurate statement.
Okay, so half a billion dollars is not an overstatement of that. Okay. So it's a half a billion dollars in projects that need to be completed by water and sewer departments that are going to be directly, unless we get grant money, similar to this ARPA money that's coming forward, right? That will directly impact the ratepayers, whether over 20 years, 40 years, 50 years, 100 years, call it what you will, without any other mandates that are coming down, obviously, with changes from the EPA. So that's a savings, right? So if we do $6 million, and I don't disagree, I think we need to identify what the projects are that we're going to use. But if it's $6 million, that's $6 million we're not going to the ratepayer. And we constantly hear that we want to save the taxpayer and the ratepayer money. So the only way to directly do that is to approve this, right? That is a savings, whether it's $2 a quarter, whether it's 50 cents a quarter, that is a direct savings to the taxpayer, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I, I would say, you know, it, we've, we've got to identify, identify the, the projects. If we don't do that, that means we're going directly to the, to the ratepayers now and all these other projects that we're going to be doing in, in the future that we're mandated to do, right?
Correct.
So, you know, listen, we, we just approved flashing stop signs. We just approved flashing crosswalks. You know, I would tell you right now, that should have been built in the budget, it was removed from the budget, okay? That was also obviously saving taxpayer money because we're using federal monies, which is, by the way, all tax money coming down anyways, right? So when, I don't know that we're quote unquote truly saving taxpayer money, but we're helping to alleviate the burden to taxpayers. So I think it's one for one. I think it's a little give and take in terms of what's going on, but also not losing sight that we have over half a billion dollars worth of mandated projects before us and that we have to improve our water mains, our sewer mains throughout the entire city, right? So that's not a small undertaking, that's a large undertaking, right?
Yeah.
We also got, you know, families that are coming before us telling about the flood situation. You go down to Stafford Square, that's a project that's, again, is an enormous project, which we're not even going to attempt to address because we just don't have the funding for it, right? So there, there are projects that you go through the city that this, this funding could be used for that we wouldn't otherwise get there. And I think that's what we need to not lose sight of is there are significant projects and I got to be honest, we, we've been here, right, for budget meetings and we argue, right? I mean, you, you've got water rates that have not gone, that were not past, you know, what, six, eight months outside of a budget year, right? Because of a two-cent increase, an eight-cent increase? Because of a two-cent increase, an eight-cent increase, right? And here we are talking about trying to give six million dollars back to the taxpayers.
Yep.
Okay, so I, just me, as one individual, I think it was, it's a great compromise. I know, you know, the Vice President was looking for more money, but I think it's a compromise. We only have nine million dollars. Let's support the compromise that was there for funding for our youth to support that. Let's also try to save some additional monies for the, you know, for the rate payers and water and sewer, and let's move on. I would just say, let's, you know, obviously have these projects identified, and I think that's easy enough for you to go identify, you've got...
Without a doubt, yeah. You know, one thing that I just wanna add, that was mentioned early, you know, and a number of people, every year, I do the fly-in for the past three years with the federal government, talking to the delegation about our issues here. You know, this funding, oppo funding, had specifically water and sewer infrastructure named within its ability to be able to use it. There's a reason that they specifically put water and sewer infrastructure directly in the oppo. You know, that was money coming from the federal government. We've been asking for thirty-plus years for money from the federal government. I think we just need to keep that in mind.
Good point. I yield.
Thank you. So I guess my comments would be, my goal was strictly to do something for the taxpayers, the rate payers, and the citizens of Fall River. In all due respect, I think lead removal is a life-saving issue. It's a reason the EPA has mandated that lead piping be removed from homes. It's a carcinogen, it causes many health issues. So I think if you want to talk about projects, we, if, whatever this council, whatever projects this council deems best or necessary, I have no issue with. But I think some, some of this does come down to saving lives. And we do have people where, you know what, two dollars more on your water bill may be insignificant. Two dollars more on someone who already can't afford medication is significant. So I also look at that. But whatever this council chooses to do, I started high, hoping for something. We're down to six million. I would appreciate if this council would allow the six million. And yes, I think it's fair that we name projects, and those projects be completed. With that, I yield. Thank you. Counselor in seat seven, Counsel Repouzou.
Yeah, so I agree with you, in the sense that it's a, it's a two-balance of trying to save taxpayer some money, as well as the lead, lead service removal is key to this. So I would like to see, if possible, Mr. Ferland, to identify those projects that we would target this money with, and then at the next meeting, come to us with that, so we can really attach that to this. That's what I'd be looking for. So I'll make it in the form of a motion, that Mr. Ferland produce a list of projects to present to us for this, for this proposal.
Can you hold that motion?
Yeah, I will.
It's already been before us, so it can't be tabled. So if you wanna make a motion to give the six million dollars with the amendment that he will come down with proposals to share with us, but you can't table it. Again, it's already here.
You both yield, Counselor in seat...
It was already here before.
Counselor in seat two, Counsel Kamara.
So, Mr. Ferland, just have a question. Are you doing lead abatement right now, we're doing in the budget that you just asked this past year? Did the council approve?
So we're doing some lead, lead service removals with our own staff, while available when they're not working on water main breaks.
Supported by the budget we just passed.
Yes, supported by the budget, and we also, within the water main replacement project, the contract one, through the cities are providing, we're doing lead service removal there as well.
Okay, so we're doing some of that life-saving work right now?
An amount, yes.
Okay. And you came before the council looking for how much of a rate increase last year?
Last year, we were seven cents on water, seven cents on sewer.
So basically, half of what we're getting now, thirteen cents, is what the, and we just tried, you tried to get a seven-cent increase. Did it pass unanimously?
Uh, no, it did not.
So we have life-saving projects that we say we support, but when it comes time for the vote, and put the money where your mouth is, didn't pass unanimously. I voted for the budget, 'cause I understand the significance...
Yep.
...of not passing that type of a budget. What will happen if that budget didn't pass? What would be the implication if five city councils said no?
You know, if five city councillors said no to the water sewer department budget, as well as not supporting the rates, there would be, first, the DOR, if we didn't have rates to be able to support our budget, we would potentially, the city tax base would have to support that, so there may be a supplemental budget required by the city.
Let's just make, I'm gonna make it plain simple.
Yeah.
Would it be a major catastrophe?
Yeah, without a doubt, you know...
Without a doubt, it would be a major catastrophe. That's why I voted for that budget, for that seven-cent increase. And I'm gonna support the thirteen-cent increase, because whether it's eight dollars a year, at the end of the day, it's a total savings of six million dollars that the taxpayers don't have to pay locally. But when I hear city council say, you know, I support life-saving issues and matters here, but when it comes time to support the life-saving issues and matters, we don't get unanimous support on that. And it's happened, not just this year, it's happened previous years, previous councils, and I've heard previous councils say over, I wanna support, I wanna give them what they deserve, I wanna give them, time, comes time to put your money where your mouth is, they're out the chair, nope, sorry, not me, can't do it, let other people support it, not me. And it's unfortunate, but it really gets me going when I hear people say things. And then when it comes time to put your money where the mouth is and take the tough votes, that they don't support the life-saving measures then, do they? They don't support the increases, that if you don't support them, become catastrophic for the residents of this community, and will cost them five times what they're paying now. With that, I yield.
So, do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the six million dollars with an amendment that the council be notified of what the project, where the six million dollars will go. That we'll get that information from Mr. Ferland.
Motion made by Counsel Pereira, do we have a second?
Point of information, do we have to amend the original order first, to reflect the six million instead of the eleven?
Yeah, that's why I made a motion for six million dollars.
You said eleven, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
Second, that was on six million, you said, right?
Six million.
Let's ask the clerk what she has done, because let's make sure it's right. Now, clerk, what is the, well, do you have amended there?
We will, we'll amend this to read that the city council vote to obligate...
Six million.
Six million dollars of Bristol County oppo funding for water and sewer infrastructure mandates.
Right.
Second, what?
And further amended that Mr. Ferland will provide to the council a list of projects to be completed with that six million dollars.
I'll second that.
Second, Counsel, seat one, Counsel Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance, accompanied by an emergency preamble, be passed through first reading, second reading, passed to be enrolled, and passed to be ordained with Counsel Deion absent and not voting. This is a handicapped parking ordinance.
Uh, motion to adopt the emergency preamble. Second.
And pass through all readings?
Emergency preamble first.
Sir's...
Role call.
Role call?
Role call on the emergency preamble. Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Kamara?
Yes.
Deion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
Repouzou?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
And President LaLeverdi LaBalle.
Motion to adopt, through all readings. Second.
Motion to adopt, through all readings, by Counsel Kadim, second. Counsel Repouzou, role call.
Excuse me. We don't need a role call on...
Not on that one?
Not to all readings.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading with Counsel Deion absent and not voting. This is a miscellaneous traffic ordinance.
Motion to adopt. Second.
Motion to adopt made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This is the ordinance that would abolish the Board of Fire Commissioners.
Motion approved first reading as amended. Second.
Motion to approve made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Repouzou. Does this need a role call, is just...
No, no.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading. This ordinance would abolish the Board of Police.
Motion to adopt first reading as amended.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Repouzou, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. This ordinance would establish the position of the Director of City Operations.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Pereira, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. This ordinance relates to the reorganization of city departments.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Second.
Motion to adopt was made by Counsel Repouzou, seconded by Counsel Kadim, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended. This is the salary schedule for contract personnel.
Motion to pass first reading as amended.
Motion to pass through first readings was made by Counsel Kadim, seconded by Counsel Kilby, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be passed through first reading as amended with Counsel Deion opposed. This is the salary schedule for executive officers, department heads, and non-union personnel.
Motion to pass through first reading.
Second.
Motion to pass through first reading by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Washington. Counselor in seat five.
Thank you. You know, pay raises, and fair money for people, doing the right job, and some people just don't get, recognize how important it is to have a man in charge of the sewer and water that does an excellent job here in the city of Fall River. And I'm to understand, he makes a hundred and seven thousand, that's what he makes. And other communities are paying a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. And this guy, Mr. Ferland, has twelve licenses, and he worked hard to get certified. He's got water department distribution license, grade four, grade, treatment license, grade four, wastewater operation license, grade six, associate master certificate purchasing official, master engineer in training, and it goes on, and it goes on. He worked hard for this. We've got other places in the city, either fire, the police department, that get certified at college, and they get extra money. This individual, just take today, we had three water breaks the last two weeks. He gets up, go to the water break, five o'clock this morning, spend the day here. Then he come over here, and he's here tonight. There's no way this man only works forty hours a week. He's here, and he does what he has to do, and never complain. But, you know, you got some people that are gonna do their forty hours a week, or thirty-five hours a week, and it's a stretch. This individual does what he has to do. This individual likes the city, he really don't wanna leave. But when you got people pulling at your heels, that they know how good he is, how important he is, you know, we have to try to take care of this individual. So I'd like to make an amendment, the salaries not to exceed, you're gonna think it's a lot of money, a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, not to exceed. Now, if this didn't work, and he left, and to bring somebody in, what's the most money they can give him? Probably say, look, we gotta replace you, where you come from, I come from a small town here, he's paying us a hundred and eighteen thousand, well, you can stop Fall River for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand. What does he know about Fall River? The education, the sewer, the water lines, Copacabana River, the chemicals, DEP and EPA and everything that goes with it? We got a guy. Marilyn Roaldy just said we oughta get the best and brightest, a long time ago. I'll never forget that. He's the best. He's bright, he does the job, he oughta been constantly awarded for it. But, you know, I don't know what you guys think, but let me tell ya, I think it's very, very, very important. And I gotta say to Mr. Kamara, twenty-three years ago, when we decided, you decided, put it to a vote, that we spend the money to reline the water pipes, and it's wicked, five million dollars a year. We're ahead of so many communities that are not doing it, and some communities are in trouble, because they never started it, and their pipes are no good, the water's no good. You know what we went through? Every week, every twice a meeting, they come in with their jars full of water and full of water, and we decided, the council, we're gonna hit on this, we're gonna take care of it. Eddie Grace was the water man and the water man, and he tried to take care of Fall River a long time ago. And it's our job to make sure that our water's good, and plentiful. Right now, Dartmouth, it's got a ban on watering the grass and washing cars, not Fall River. We have the water, could've preserved the water. We have the right man doing the right job. I brought this up a couple of times to the mayor, and, yeah, okay, I understand. Hey, you don't understand. You're gonna lose the guy. We're gonna lose the guy. We're gonna be in trouble. That's what we're facing. People can say, what's the matter with Pelletier, a hundred and fifty-five thousand? No, we need the guy. He's the guy. And if he's satisfied to do it for that kind of money, which is fair enough, we oughta make sure that we keep this individual. So I'd like to make an amendment that we vote to not to exceed a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, or send it back to ordinance, and try to straighten this out somewhat.
Counselor in seat six, Counsel Pereira.
You know, the concern I have, I understand what Counsel Pelletier is saying, that people need more money. Mr. Ferland may need more money, so does a lot of other people. I certainly wouldn't wanna lose him. But he is losing guys at the treatment facility. He's losing guys at the water department. So he's losing people. To give him a whole bunch of money and not give it to people that work for him too, is hard. It's a hard thing to do. So you wanna send it back to ordinance, send it back to ordinance. If you wanna raise his not to exceed a hundred and twenty, I'll make an amendment that it go to a hundred and twenty. But you're gonna, you know, not to exceed one fifty-five, and he's got guys there that, you know, I mean, come on, you have a CDL driver that goes from the water department[1803.76] Or if you wanna have him not to exceed, put him under a contract, per contract. Let him flush it out with the mayor on what he does, and make his position be a contract. I mean, that's another option you can do. But, that's, that's my feelings on it. I mean, yeah, everybody deserves more. We have clerks here that are eligible for food stamps. That's sick, that we don't pay people enough. But you can't pick and choose one person. I mean, really, water isn't in bad shape. And they said, in the state paper, it said, when they came down and did their evaluation, it was the money, finances, staffing, and management, that there was a problem with all three. So, that's an issue. But if you wanna bring it back to ordinance, I'll make a motion that it go back to ordinance. Unless you wanna switch it and put it, per contract, put it on the contract side, and then let Mr. Ferland fight it out with the mayor, which is fine. He'll be on contract.
Point of information?
But I think-
Mr. Ferland didn't want it per contract.
Well, maybe he doesn't, but if he could get more money, maybe he'd want it by contract. You know, I don't know. But, I mean, I just feel bad. You can't give the people at the top more and more, and the ones at the bottom nothing. There's such an imbalance here in the whole city over, you know, what people get at the top. So even when they negotiate with a contract, with their contracts, if they're gonna get a three percent raise, a three percent raise of somebody who's making forty thousand and a three percent of somebody who's making a hundred thousand, there's a big difference. So, and then we're gonna have every other department coming in, "Hey, raise mine, raise mine, raise mine." I don't know. I mean, I don't have a problem with it going back to ordinance. With that, I yield.
Council in seat two, Council Kamara.
Thank you. Yeah, I think it's just dangerous if we're gonna be setting a number and coming up. I know the Ordinance Committee worked very hard on this, and everyone else as well. But I think to Council in seat six's point, we can't pick and choose. I think he does a good job. I think he deserves more. What that more is, I think should be not discussed here or worked this way, because she's right. Others will be standing in line, saying, "How about me?" And she's right. This entire city department, there's a lot of people here that could benefit from, that are probably, you know, working and could work and deserve to get more, working very hard and aren't compensated evenly. It's not just Fall River. It's a lot of community municipalities. But I think that what we need to do, and it's not a problem that occurred overnight. It's been going on for a long, long time. There's too many people who work for the city that aren't compensated as what they should be and what other communities are compensated for. Can we get to where they are right away? I don't know. I don't think so. But we should start addressing it sooner than later. And we've done some adjustments. It takes time. I know back in other administrations, they made some adjustments, and you do them gradually. Do we have the finances to do them all right away? No, we don't. But jumping to one individual, putting it at a certain level, in my opinion, is dangerous to do it here as an amendment to something that before us. And I would much rather have the administration involved and the Ordinance Committee involved. And, you know, maybe we can just vote on this the way it is now, and then revisit it again with certain individuals, and look at that study that was done, see who needs to be compensated more, and will they have more tasks to do for that? But I think it's at all levels. So I don't know that I'd support an amendment that, to anyone right now. Not, any disrespect to Mr. Ferland, I think he does a good job, but I don't think if it's any individual, we're going down a very dangerous road. So we need to hold back the reins, and then let's do it the right way. In the Ordinance Committee, whether it's sent down by the administration or put a resolution together by the councilors to address certain individuals, and let's compensate them accordingly to what their responsibilities and what their duties are in the city. With that, I yield.
Council in seat one, Council Kadim.
Thank you. Before Council in seat two spoke, I was gonna say that I agree with both Councils seat five and six. And I was just probably trying to walk the fence here. But, you know, Councilor in seat two kind of echoed what I was gonna say. So just to put everything in perspective, when the Ordinance Committee met, the initial proposal sent down to us was that it was gonna be a contract position. The contract position was objected to by Mr. Ferland. So we listened to his concerns, and quite frankly, you know, my take is always, let's take the lead with the administration. They're the ones that are overseeing day-to-day operation for the city. That being said, you know, part of the reason that this was approved was because we didn't want to hold up any changes that were made to other positions. What we did say was that, go back, reevaluate, and do a comparative analysis with other communities to see where this position falls in terms of contract. If it was an individual contract, then the administration would be able to negotiate and do that behind closed doors. To get it before ordinance, obviously, there's not, now there's a not to exceed. But to get it passed at the time it was in subcommittee, the administration, or at least the city administrator, did not have authorization from the mayor to make any amendment higher than what we had. So that's where we came back and said, "Okay, well, we'll approve it. You do a comparative analysis, then come back down. We'll have a conversation, 'cause I don't disagree." I think, you know, there's significant salary inequity, inequity, I should say, with other communities, right? And that position is one, but, you know, we just had the administration come down, trying to find and fill positions when people are leaving in such a competitive environment right now with the workforce, when you don't have folks who are enough people willing to come to work, especially in the public sector. And usually, the public sector is where everybody wants to go to because of certain benefits. But right now, we've, we had the administration come down, tell about, talk to us about the environmental police officers. You know, they can't fill the police, you know, police officer positions, which is now affecting environmental police. So it runs the gamut. And I think, listen, when we, you know, Councilor in seat six is a hundred percent right. When you have employees who are eligible for food stamps, that says something. There's inequity across the board. So we've gotta figure out how we address this issue. But it's gotta be something that makes sense, and there's gotta be a plan to make sure that everybody is getting some increases to, number one, at least maintain the inflation rate that we're currently seeing, right? So just the one percents and the two percents aren't working, but it also comes to affordability and sustainability measure. But I made the argument, if, you know, Mr. Ferland leaves tomorrow, we're advertising higher. We really are. That's the only way we're gonna attract somebody. But unfortunately, we were, we were dealt with a proposal or resolution that had him as a contract position. We made the amendment. And there was no authorization at that time without having a conversation with the mayor as to whether or not, you know, there would be support for it moving higher than that. So, I can tell you, as, as one individual, if they came back and they say there's communities, and they give us an analysis with other communities, I'd be more than willing to take it back to Ordinance Committee and have those discussions to address it. I just don't want to hold it up for all these other employees that are in there. And the other piece is, even if we approve the motion that you put forth, it's a not to exceed. So if, you know, if the administration doesn't want to move on, it doesn't mean that he's gonna get the money. So I'd rather have at least some buy-in with the administration to say, "Okay, we do agree with this. This is what we wanna do in terms of salary." And this way, we have some, some input at the table to say, "Okay, we kind of agree with it." But just to throw the number out, it doesn't change anything, 'cause he could still be getting paid a hundred, even if we, even if we approved it to a hundred and fifty, right? So then we're just going back and forth arguing with the administration, saying, "Why, why isn't it at a hundred and fifty?" Right? So I'd rather just have them do a comparative analysis with salaries, and then just bring it down to us. With that, I yield.
Council in seat five, Council Pelletier.
Yeah, and I certainly don't wanna shortchange the guys who work there. He lost a lot of means, because they didn't wanna pay him. And these guys had licenses everywhere. They went someplace else. So, there's a problem. There's a problem there. And to rectify it as well, I'll show this out at one fifty-five. And if it goes not to exceed, okay, it's a beginning. But to send it back to ordinance, to try to come up with some solution to make sure that we maintain what we got. So, you know, if not to exceed, you feel that you don't wanna do it, at least, you're right. Send it back to ordinance. Let's work on it. Let's compare what communities are paying. And let's just try to do the right thing. I just can't see us losing this guy. That's how important it is to me. And I think to the taxpayers probably won't say, "Well, I think you're wrong. It's too much money." But if he goes, you're gonna get, they're gonna get more monies than more money that he get. They're gonna raise it up, and you're gonna end up with someone that doesn't know all of the job. Doesn't know everything in Fall River, what's happening, and all this stuff. So I'm trying to save him. And he's not related to me. It's something I think the city should do. Keep that in mind. Send it back to ordinance. You wanna do that? That's all well and good. But, you know, let's not just leave it on the table and not address it. You know, he got, he's got a family, and he knows what he gets. He knows what he means. He knows what he does. He knows what he's with, and we'll take it from there. So we just gotta decide whether or not we wanna keep him, we wanna pay him, or we wanna get rid of him. With that, I yield.
Is there a motion on the floor?
Is there a motion on the floor?
A motion to amend it to not to exceed one fifty-five?
Was there a motion? I thought Shawn had made a motion.
No, no, there was a motion from Council Pelletier, but it didn't get a second.
Okay, it didn't get accepted.
Do we have a second? No second?
No.
The motion fails?
Okay, another motion? To make a motion to send it back to ordinance for further study, and maybe all can work on it. I mean, it's a beginning.
Can I just, can I just make a motion to waive the rules before? Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, you made the motion.
Do we have a second on the motion?
No.
I'll second it for discussion. Can I just, motion to waive the rules?
So we have a motion from-
Second, second.
Council in seat five, Pelletier, seconded by Council Kadim. Motion to waive the rules. All in favor?
Aye. So I seconded the motion. I don't, I'm not gonna support this motion as it stands. I guess my question is, what I would support is whether or not we would be able to carve out Mr. Ferland's position in particular, and send that back to ordinance, approve all the other ordinance positions. And then I guess my second question to that, since they're real simple. The, obviously, the increase not to exceed is obviously gonna stifle you. I don't know if there was any intent to automatically bump him up once this got approved. That would obviously have to hold off until, if it's not approved in ordinance, right? So I mean, so that would stop him from getting at least somewhat of a salary increase within the next few weeks.
Right. So just, everyone here knows this, but just for the folks watching at home, what we're talking about here is not automatic raises for everyone who is part of this proposal, and not an automatic raise for Mr. Ferland, but rather to raise the ceiling so that there is more leeway for us to still be within ordinance, but give people raises and cost of living adjustments, which are different. Because right now, we have a number of folks who are outside of ordinance, because cost of living adjustments have increased their salaries to the point where they are beyond the not to exceed number. And I know everyone knows that. I just wanted to make that clear for, for the general viewing public. With regard to Mr. Ferland's situation, I certainly understand all of his reasons. And this was talked about at length at the Ordinance Committee meeting, for not wanting to go to a per-contract. And I think especially when his contract would go through the Water Board, it would go through the Sewer Board, and ultimately come before the City Council. And then he would be in the position of having to come before this same council that approves that contract and asks for increases to his rate. As he is the Director of an Enterprise Fund, it's a slightly different situation than me being here, asking you to approve my contract, if there's another shot for me to ask you to approve a contract, and then also advocating for one thing or another. I'm not in charge of an enterprise fund, so I'm not asking you to do things with money that I'm directly overseeing, right? So I understand his position. The city's position was, we felt like we could be competitive, not only with Mr. Ferland, but in the event that Mr. Ferland were to leave, we were to be able to be competitive with his successor by having a per-contract position. We deferred to Mr. Ferland and said, "Well, let's just do the same increase across, that we have across the board in what was, what's in your packet and what was before the Ordinance Committee," which essentially is about a ten percent increase of the cap. Not a ten percent raise, but a ten percent increase in the ability, the capacity for increase. If, but the reality is, that ten percent does not put Mr. Ferland in a competitive position. All right? I agree with that. And so if the idea were that we would go above the ten percent, or the council would want to go above the ten percent, I will say that that's probably very fair. That gives us flexibility. But there is no decision one way or the other. I'm not saying there is a decision not to bring Mr. Ferland up from where he is now, but there isn't a decision to do it either. It is ambivalent at this point. That's a conversation that we'll have privately with Mr. Ferland. But we do need the ability to bring him up, because he's valuable, and he is credentialed, and does really important work for the city. And I would say the same can be said of many, many, many employees that we have in the city who do incredibly difficult work every day consistently, and just don't get paid enough. That's the nature of doing public service sometimes, unfortunately. So-
I was just gonna say, as far as the rest of his department goes, we can't always say publicly what's going on, behind the scenes, but there are things that we're actively working on to remedy some of the issues that are going on, not only in his department, but with some of the other departments that we've identified too, where we really need to correct some, some things that are going on with personnel.
And you recall that as part of the AFSMI contract that this council approved, and that we came to agreement on several months ago, there is, for the very first time, a reevaluation provision that, beginning in December, and then going into effect with the next fiscal year, so July, there's an entire reeval process where any employee who's within that bargaining unit can come to HR, go through a process within the city to actually have their position increased. Because we recognize that within AFSMI, there are many, many different smaller subunits. They all do very different jobs, and some of them really should be increased. And, you know, to just do the, use a blunt instrument and do it across the board doesn't really effectively balance our responsibility to be good stewards of city resources, while at the same time being good employers of incredibly hardworking people. So to have that ability to do the reeval with AFSMI is a first step. We're still negotiating with Teamsters. I can't comment on that. But we're adamant about trying to really work hard to reach an equitable and beneficial agreement there. And I think this represents this, this increase of the cap on a bunch of positions beyond just Mr. Ferland's position, also represents a seriousness on the part of the administration to do the same here.
So can I, I guess, can I just ask for clarification? So I appreciate everything you just said. So I just wanna make sure I didn't interpret your statements incorrectly. So are you suggesting that there's a willingness from the administration, if we were to bump that not to exceed from one twenty-two to a higher number?
At the council's pleasure.
Oh, okay. 'Cause I know, when we met at the, in the Ordinance Committee, you weren't sure if you had the authorization to go ahead and do that.
That's true. That's why I stood up. You know, obviously, it wasn't my place to insert myself into this conversation here. At the time, the ten percent was really the most I believed we could do. Because it's a not to exceed, and it's not any sort of guaranteed raise.
Yep.
It certainly doesn't obligate the administration, but it gives us the flexibility.
So let me ask you the question. The, and I forgot the number that Council in seat five had asked, but I think-
Hundred and fifty-five thousand?
I was gonna say a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. Are you comfortable, is the administration comfortable with that number if we did a not to exceed? Knowing full well, as you mentioned, and we pointed out, does not mean that he's getting a hundred and fifty-five thousand. It's just a not to exceed?
Yes, sir.
Okay. With that, I mean, I'd reconsider the motion. I know there's a motion on the, on the floor. If Councilor in seat five wants to withdraw the motion that he just made, then, you know, based on the information I received from the administration, I can, I can approve the, or at least second the, you know, the motion that Councilor in seat five had made earlier. So with that, I yield.
So we have a motion?
All right, so my choice is withdraw the last, and resubmit the others? Okay, make the motion again to-
You're withdrawing your second motion?
And then make another motion, one fifty-five, not to exceed one fifty-five.
Send it back to ordinance?
No.
Yeah.
Or just, we can correct it now?
Second.
Second, Council Kadim. Council in seat four, Council Kilby.
Yes, I'll be supporting the motion. I mean, it's, it's a target, and we don't have the, I mean, there's no guarantees he's gonna be getting that. But I think Council Pelletier's argument makes sense in terms of at least having the administration have the ability to, to do that. And a city administrator at the last meeting was praising Mr. Ferland, making it seem like the sky's gonna fall if we lose him. So-
I would say it would be difficult to lose him, just like it would be difficult to lose Mr. Macalini.
You said it'd be a nightmare if we did or something along those lines.
It'd be challenging, no question.
So I'm in favor of giving the administration the ability to, to make that move if they so choose. So, thank you. I yield.
Council in seat two, Council Kamara.
Thank you. So I'm an annoyed to say-
So I'm annoyed with the statement really that I don't think, I think we're going down a very dangerous road here. I want to support Mr. Ferland as well. What about everybody else? Are we getting any other negotiations? Are we talking about anyone else in the city that...
So if you look at every other position here, all of the not to exceeds, if they are not to exceeds, are within what seems to be a competitive range, and we've actually looked at each one individually. I would say Mr. Ferland is maybe the one position on here that if we did that standard 10%, we wouldn't be competitive. And then where we didn't think we could be competitive, we went to by contract. So we actually strategically already singled out the other similarly situated positions and said, you know what? This needs to be by contract. Because, you know, an assessor, an auditor, any of those types of folks, you're not going to get them for what the not to exceed would have been. We need to be able to negotiate on a contract. So only because Mr. Ferland answers to three boards, that's the problem.
I get it, I understand the completely, but my question is, what are we going to do about the rest of the people in this building? Are we starting to look at what the competitive wages are for the people who are eligible for food stamps?
Absolutely.
So how soon can we see increases in those, for those individuals?
So the majority of those folks would fall into that category I just talked about with the AFSMI contract. So what we're, if we're being honest, and we'll just, you know, say it...
Well, why not? Why not be honest? We're all honest.
Well, no, but if we're, if we're just, if we're being candid about who we're talking about, right? There's a lot of clerks, there's a lot of folks that, you know, it doesn't require, you know, certain certifications and training and whatever else, that have traditionally been paid less than a lot of other folks. For the very first time, they have the opportunity to, based upon the conditions of their work and the requirements of their work, request a reclassification, that they actually have a very good shot at receiving. And so that was never the case. It was always the case where they were essentially, they had to live with whatever the bargaining unit agreed on, and that bargaining unit may or may not always be able to adequately represent the interests of the different subunits, because it's trying to paint with a broad brush. Nothing against the union.
How soon can we see increases for those individuals?
So they, the way we set it up is, the contract went into effect July 1st, they would be able to apply for the upgrades December?
Right, actually, so right now is they're submitting paperwork for the upgrades. December is when we'll actually do a job audit, so I will review it, we'll recommend things to the city administrator, administrator will review it, and then we pass it on for the following July. But outside of that, there are things that we are trying to address as needed that are more, that need immediate attention. So there are both pieces of this.
And so beyond the requested job audits, there's some that we're actually doing suisprate by our, you know, on our own, because they just need to be done, Water's one of those.
All right, without a yield, thank you.
Councillor in seat seven, councillor Reposo?
Just a quick question to follow up. How many people have submitted for that, for that request?
Far less than I expected at this point. I maybe have received...
Rough estimate?
Ten. Out of a bargaining unit of, I think, 172.
Fair enough. I yield, thank you.
Councillor in seat six, councillor Pereira?
I've got to tell you that I'm not feeling very comfortable about this conversation. We weren't talking about a position, we were talking about a person. And honestly, as human resource, I don't think it's appropriate for us to be talking about a person. It should be just the position. And I agree with my colleague in seat number two. You're opening the door, because you might have somebody else that comes in, a department head, that comes in and says, I want my not to exceed to be higher, too. I think that it should be both of the way it is, and you know, and you send to the administration, you talk to the mayor, and you let him know the feelings of this council, that our feelings are, that people aren't getting paid enough across the board. And you can express whatever councillor Palatier's concern is, which I think is legit. But I really feel uncomfortable. We don't bargain with people. We don't do that, and I think it's very inappropriate, just as I thought it was inappropriate at the ordinance committee meeting, to see that. I think I talked to you about that.
Sure. Yeah, I don't see, I don't see this as bargaining with a person. I see this as talking about how do we replace that person?
I don't like talking about a person. You're talking about a position, and what a position, what the price should be on a position, based on that position necessitating all these different trainings or certifications or what have you. But to be talking about an individual and bringing an individual's name, I'm just being honest with you, I don't think that that is appropriate.
Well...
With that, I yield.
With respect, I don't think that's what we're doing, but I hear what you're saying.
I don't like that.
So I will just say that for the administration, getting this passed...
Yeah.
...is much more important than giving a little bit on one position. And so the prospect of this going back to ordinance and taking another, you know, just the way things happen, another several months, is just intolerable for me.
No, I mean, how long has this been in ordinance committee?
Because we really need to work with these people.
How long has this been in ordinance?
Quite a while. You know, through no fault of anybody, it's just the way things work.
Yeah, no, it's through fault. They should have moved a lot sooner. I think you had this over a year ago there, which is kind of crazy.
I don't...
I don't, yeah, I mean, they can raise it to whatever they want.
Point of information?
Just says chairman of ordinance, because I think that was a little swipe of me.
I don't think it was, no, I don't think it was even when you were there. I think it was before you even got there.
It was, but it was originally resent, and the administration asked us to hold off on it, so I just want to be clear, so I mean...
Yeah, no, it's been a couple of months. There was no suggestion for me that it's been a year.
No, I wasn't suggesting you, I was just saying, I just wanted to...
No, I didn't know it was resent either. But I don't care, I mean, if councillor Palatier feels good at putting a price of 155, not saying he's going to get 155, or that position, will get 155, any of these. It's not going to happen unless everything else floats with it. But I just, again, I just don't feel that we should be talking about an individual, or we should be talking about the position. With that, I yield, thank you.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second? Do a roll call vote?
Where is the motion? To raise it to 155?
To raise the not to exceed to 155,000?
Yeah, 155,000.
For the measure of community utilities.
For the, yes.
If I may?
Excuse me, yes.
I got the floor?
Yes.
Okay, not to exceed, that doesn't mean he's going to get 155. Mr. Akins, how many people are on the list for not to exceed right now?
Everyone on the list that's before you, councillor, so that's, what is it?
The whole list? The whole list. So what's the problem?
About 50, can you, sir?
So I think it's a total of, so in ordinance, I think it's about 60-ish people that are listed in ordinance, 60 positions that are listed in ordinance with a not to exceed. Some of those are proposed to change to per-contract.
So why we shouldn't, we should listen and go and do what we have to do, not to exceed. If you've got 60, 70 more, well, we're not singling them out, everybody else that goes for it, not to exceed. That doesn't mean they're going to get it, but at least, you know, there's a possibility that he will or will not, but he'd probably stick around to make sure that he'd get a little more, that he'd be more comfortable. And that's all I want, you know? Get a fair shot, and let's see what's going on. Now I know he's not the only one, you know? You know, I've been here a while, I don't ask for too many things. Of course, I lose once in a while. If I lose this one, I try. What if I don't? Hey, the old man's going to go sooner or later. But, you know, you can bend a little bit, my colleagues, if you'd like to. I hear it, that's all. Without a yield, that's it.
Councillor in seat two, councillor Camara?
Yeah, I just want to make my position perfectly clear. I understand the not to exceed, I understand he's not going to get it if they don't want to get it, I get the whole, just I've been doing this for quite some time. I don't like the process, that's my only point. I don't think it should be here in the council chambers that we're changing for one individual, and that's all, it should go back to the ordinance, or have the ordinance come up with a new one for that individual, and then presented that way with the administration's input, not the councillors, because we're going to get phone calls. What about me? What about me? And it could be maybe not to exceed another 5,000 from what they already have, this and that. I like the man, I think he does a good job, I will support the increase when it comes down that way. I just don't want to be the one to make the increases here in the council floor when we're going to ready to support it here. So without, I won't be supporting it. Without a yield.
Councillor in seat one, councillor Kadeem?
No, thank you. So I just wanted to clarify my stance as well. I don't disagree with my colleague in seat two, and quite frankly, I've said this to the administration, I don't think employees should be dictating what their salaries are in terms of an ordinance, or whether it's contract, so I disagree with that entire process. However, the administration did come down before us with the intent to try to take it out of, out of a not to exceed ordinance, make it a contract position to give you the flexibility. That being said, the reason I am supporting it is not for one individual, while I respect Mr. Ferland, it's the position of community, Director of Community Utilities. I just think it's undervalued to what everybody is saying, so that's why I'm supporting this. However, again, not that it's going to get to 155, because if it gets to 155, then we're back here next year, obviously, to make those adjustments, because it's in ordinance for that, that portion of it. So I will be supporting it for the position, not in particular of the person. So again, I just wanted to clarify that, but I do agree with my colleague in seat two. The, you know, the process needs to obviously play out in a better way, and I recognize we've had those conversations in subcommittee, and obviously you brought to light that the administration does support it, because I think if we had that in subcommittee, then I think the recommendation coming out of subcommittee would have been a little bit different than what we have before us, and it may have been in line with the 155, but we didn't have that information.
Yeah, at the time, that was all I could do, but I guess my, just the administration's priority is for as much of this to move forward as possible.
I recognize that.
Because we really need to get these folks back in ordinance.
We're going to vote on the amendment, do you, first?
Yes.
Back, so...
Without a yield.
Roll call?
This is on what?
This is on the amendment, which would be to amend the salary of the Director of Community Utilities, and the salary would be not to exceed $155,000. Councillors Kadeem?
Yes.
Camara?
No.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
Palatier?
Yes.
Pereira?
No.
Reposo?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
President Lala Bilow.
Motion passes?
The motion passes.
Motion to adopt as amended.
Second.
Motion to adopt as amended, was made by councillor Kadeem, seconded by councillor Kilby. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed resolution be granted leave to withdraw. This resolution related to stormwater accounts for properties located east of the North Watapa area.
Motion leave to withdraw.
Second.
Motion grant leave to withdraw by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Kadeem. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Committee on Ordinances and Legislation, at a meeting held on August 29th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying proposed ordinance be granted leave to withdraw. This was an ordinance that related to the position of Director of Community Services.
Motion submit.
Motion grant leave to withdraw made by councillor Reposo, seconded by...
Second.
Councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
We have item number 21 is a proposed ordinance or miscellaneous traffic for passage through second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to approve second reading and enrollment as amended.
Motion to approve second reading enrollment by councillor Kadeem, seconded by councillor Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Whereas property owners located east of the North Watapa Pond that have stormwater accounts have applied for exemptions of the stormwater fee, and whereas requests for exemptions of the stormwater fee have been denied, and whereas residents have questioned the validity of exemptions, now therefore be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene with the Administrator of Community Utilities and Corporation Council to review and amend the stormwater fee ordinance.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt was made by councillor Kadeem, seconded by councillor Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Whereas Joseph Reposo was born in Fall River on February 8, 1937, the only child of Portuguese immigrant parents, and whereas he graduated from BMC Durfee High School in 1954, and Harvard College in 1958, and whereas he is best known for the many songs he wrote for Sesame Street, now therefore be it resolved that the song "Sing" be known as the official children's song of the city of Fall River in honor of Joseph Reposo.
Motion adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Kadeem.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Kilby. Discussion?
Can I just say that Mr. Lopes, Jim Lopes, who's working at Heritage State Park, he is doing some great things there with a lot of events and tributes that he has at the state park. And there is a woman, Sheila Olivera, who is painting portraits of people who were very well-known in Fall River. Joe Reposo's son, Nick, they had an event there, and Nick was there, and Nick said, we would love to have this song as a song of Fall River, but Fall River has a song, this would be specifically to youth, and if we played it anywhere in the city, or played it as our song, we don't have to pay royalties on it. They would let us, allow us to pay. I just think it's a nice tribute from somebody who lived in the north end of Fall River, and he was so talented, that it was Fall River people who pulled together scholarships for him to go to Harvard. So, you know, we often look at Fall River and we remember, you know, Lizzie Borden, you know, everybody talks about Lizzie Borden. What about the good people that were here that did really good things? He touched the world. So with that, I yield and thank my colleagues for their support.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
We can take item 24 and 25 together?
Motion to take 24 and 25 together. We have a second?
Second.
Second, a motion by councillor Pereira, second by councillor Palatier. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes. We have a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt by councillor Pereira, second by councillor Palatier. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? Motion passes.
Item 26 is a curb removal on behalf of Daniel Quintel for the removal of 20 and a half feet at 23 Church Street.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Camara, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item 27 is a curb removal on behalf of Elizabeth Pereira Ryan for the removal of 25 feet at 229 Hawthorne Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Reposo. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.[1630.24] Motion passes.
Item 28 is the request for Frommass Electric in Verizon, New England, for one joint pole relocation and one joint pole on 14th Street.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Repozo, seconded by councillor Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 29 is Fall River Financial LLC, doing business as Fall River Pawn Brokers, to operate and maintain pawnbroker and secondhand article stores at 364 South Main, 1475 South Main, and 1435 Pleasant Street.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Pelletier.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item 30 is an order rescheduling city council meetings for the month of November.
Can I? Can I have that? This said Committee on Finances and council meeting, what is the purpose of switching these? Is there a rationale for switching these?
I think the rationale was, there was a, it was the, election was the November 8th, and then it was the week of Thanksgiving, so it would be, it was so that wouldn't be on the election day or Thanksgiving, and it would be the opposite weeks, the off weeks.
Okay. I have an issue on the 15th. That's why I asked. But, to accommodate other people, sometimes we change things, so I will reschedule.
Councillor?
With that I yield.
Councillor in seat seven, councillor Repozo.
Just to clarify, the original, the original dates, were they the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month?
Yes, they were.
Okay. So you said that the 8th is election day, obviously, and then the week of Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Okay. I yield, thank you.
Over the, let me just add that over time, when a councillor has an extenuating circumstance that they're going to that they can't change, be it a wedding or something like that, that they have to attend out of town, or a business thing out of town, we have historically changed them to help and accommodate so that all councils are present during meetings. So I have no problem with that. I'll rearrange to, to fit.
Does anybody else?
With that I yield.
You yield, thank you. Councillor in seat one, councillor Kadim.
Just through you, Madam Vice President, I mean, to my colleague in seat six, is there another day that week besides Tuesday that works?
No, that's fine, I'll change.
Okay.
But thank you for asking.
All right. I yield.
Does anyone else have any scheduling conflicts with this change? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
Item 31 is Fall River Taxi Services, application for a new vehicle.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Kilby.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item 32 is the Police Chief's Report on Licenses.
Motion to adopt, let's unfile it. Second.
Motion to adopt by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Item 33, our auto repair shop license renewal applications.
Motion to move with the renewals.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Councillor, seconded by councillor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Have a number of claims.
Motion forward to Corporation Council.
Second.
Motion forward to Corporation Council made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Drain layer licenses?
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion to approve made by councillor Kilby, seconded by councillor Repozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Have minutes of the Zoning Board of Appeals?
Adopt.
Second.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Pelletier, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Can we take 37 to 39?
Any opposed?
Second.
Motion passes. Motion to do 37, 38, and 39 together was made by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion to approve made by councillor Repozo, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We have the miscellaneous traffic ordinance that you approved previously, which would require passage through final ordination.
So moved. Second.
Motion to, motion to pass through final organization, ordination made by councillor Repozo, seconded by councillor Pelletier. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Councillor, motion passes. Committee reports to the committee.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on September 13th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying orders be referred to the full council for adoption with council president Lala Biluwa absent and not voting. So we have before us the orders that were, that you adopted earlier this evening. So this would be the first three. The first would be the Mass DCR, extend the Quikashan River Rail Trail in the amount of $268,132. The US EPA Lead Pipe Inventory and Public Engagement Program in the amount of $100,000. And the final, excuse me, Mass EOEEA, final design and permits to repair Sori Pond Dam in the amount of $148,500.
Is there a motion?
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion by councillor Pereira, seconded by councillor Repozo. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on September 13th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be adopted contingent upon approval of ARPA funds by the Bristol County Treasury with council president Lala Biluwa absent and not voting. This is the Mass EOEEA, mitigate effects of nutrient pollution to the South Watapa Pond in the amount of $379,875.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Repozo, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
The Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on September 13th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be referred to the full council for action with council president Lala Biluwa absent and not voting. This is the Mass EOEEA, improve CSO infrastructure to mitigate effects from climate-driven flooding in the amount of $1,163,000.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Repozo, seconded by councillor Pereira. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
And lastly, the Committee on Finance, at a meeting held on September 13th, voted unanimously to recommend that the accompanying order be referred to the full council for action with council president Lala Biluwa absent and not voting. This is the order that the funding of the cost items contained in the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Fall River and the Fall River Environmental Police is hereby approved.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt made by councillor Pereira.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Washington. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
I don't know if the intention to read the letter that we received this afternoon with regard to the Madam President. I think the media's been here, waiting patiently, and it is publicized, so I think the letter should be read.
Can we defer to Corporation Council, or?
I think the letter should be read. Why does it have to go to Corporation Council? All I'm asking for is the letter get read.
I have a second now.
Okay, we have a motion to read the letter, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Please read the letter.
To my colleagues on the Fall River City Council, I have been very fortunate to be elected to the Fall River City Council by the residents of our city for four consecutive terms. By a vote of my colleagues, I was chosen to serve as vice president of the council for my second and third terms. This past January, I was honored to be voted in by my current colleagues to serve as council president. I have always held these positions in high regard. I try my best to serve as a city councillor and live my life in a purposefully positive manner. I work hard in both my professions, truly enjoy helping people and giving back to my community. While I serve a public position, by nature, I am a very private person, so these past few weeks have been a very emotionally painful experience for me. I have never been accused of a crime before, but I am certain my experience would not be considered normal. Having to patiently wait to tell the facts with the report written as it was has been a struggle for me, because while I value my privacy, I also believe the whole truth needs to be told, not just in the details of the case, but also the manner in which it was handled. This has been such a devastating experience for me personally, that moving forward, I know I will not be able to give the position of president the attention it deserves. At this time, I respectfully request that the council choose a colleague at tonight's meeting to fill this role until we vote again in January. I'm incredibly thankful for the outpouring of support the residents and employees of the city have shown me, and know that I am lucky to have the family and friends that I do. But what I have been especially thankful for is each of my fellow councillors who have reached out to me. Vice President Dion and councillors Kadim, Kilby, Pelletier, and Repozo, over the many years, city councillors have found themselves in a not-so-great-new story reported on or magnified by the fact that we hold this position. But we're not just councillors, we're humans too. Sometimes people forget that, even our own colleagues. Thank you for recognizing there's always another side to a story and reserving judgment. I appreciate your kindness more than you know. Sincerely, Pam.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned. Is there a second?
We're going to wait till the next meeting?
Motion to vote.
I'm in favor of that, second.
There won't be a vote tonight. I'll have Corporation Council come down, please.
Why can't, we can't vote tonight?
If you'll be kind enough to waive the rules.
Motion to waive the rules? Second.
Second. Motion waive rules by councillor Kadim, seconded by councillor Repozo.
It's a decision made by the council, not by Corporation Council, but the city council. I do want at least enlighten the council of what the open meeting law kind of entails here. Obviously, if it's something that could have been reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting, it should have been on a public notice, so that the public is aware of this. So clearly, this, you know, what essentially is a resignation letter could not have been reasonably anticipated. My understanding is that the letter was submitted just hours before this meeting. So legally, I think the city council is on solid ground to have a new vote, but there is a little bit of a balancing act here, because the Attorney General's office consistently strongly suggests, is the word, strongly encourages assemblies such as yourselves to hold off on having something that wasn't part of the public notice, if possible. So what you have to kind of balance is the, you know, the public's interest in this issue, which is quite strong, with the necessity of this council to elect a president immediately. And I know that, you know, it's something that this council will have to decide for themselves. I think it could be on solid ground in either decision. I mean, I would suggest to you that the Attorney General's, when they talk about the strong public interest, maybe isn't quite as strong in this instance, because it's not raising[1672.71]